Good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, October 26, 2020. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight's meeting is going to begin with the organization and reading of the mail. That will be followed by department and board updates and requests. We have an employee recognition for Amy Green, the Conservation Coordinator. We have Chief Matthew Pennard, the appointment of three part-time dispatchers. Diane Corry, the Town Clerk, will be signing general election warrant. Diane Dickerson, the Executive Assistant to the Select Board, will provide a submission of annual report for designated Green Communities grant. That will be followed by public input and members' updates. Then we will meet with Steve Anudie, the Town Treasurer, and Sean O'Brien, the Treasurer, Assistant Director of Budget and Finance regarding an MCWT loan emergency PFAS funding. That will be followed by a Select Board discussion, a consideration of Board of Health Recommendation to Cancel Halloween, townwide 25 mile-per-hour speed limits, cut through traffic, and a discussion about the day after Thanksgiving and providing town employees with that day off. That will be followed by a joint meeting with the Planning Board to discuss the Master Plan Implementation Committee Budget, Work Program, and Communication. And then we are scheduled to have a Town Administrator update regarding the signing of road layout plans for Edward Drive, Chestnut Lane, Cooper Farm Lane, Vint Lane, and Field Lane, as well as Balsam Lane, Fraser Street, Spruce Street, Fur Lane, Red Cedar Way, Douglas Street, and Cypress Lane. That will be followed by general updates from the Town Administrator. We have on a consent agenda Municipality Vulnerability Program Contract Retroactive Authorization for Town Administrator to Complete and Sign the Contract. We have a Green Communities contract with Horizon Energy Services Retroactive Authorization for the Town Administrator to Complete and Sign. And that will be followed by the Cannabis Control Commission's Host Community Agreement Certification Form for the Harvest Club Retroactive Authorization for the Town Administrator to Complete and Sign that contract. And that will be followed by a review of the Select Board meeting minutes and then adjournment of our meeting. So if you could begin, Mr. Layden, do we have any mail?
Yes, we have, within the packet, we have a letter from, sorry, just was frozen for a second on my computer, from Comcast regarding regional sports networks and changes that they're making to their procedures. And in the Board's packet, we did have congratulations for Nurse Police and Officers in Firefighters, EMTs regarding recent flu shot that was held on October 13.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, now we're on to Agenda Item Number Two. We will begin with an employee recognition of Amy Green, our Conservation Coordinator. Do we have Amy on the call?
We don't have her on the call. We begged and pleaded to try to see if she could be here, but she's actually attending a Community Preservation Committee meeting in Acton.
Oh, okay.
So she did extend her apologies for not being able to be in attendance. And as on the agenda, we can tomorrow during our Department Head meeting present her with the certificate of appreciation for the work that she had done for the Watership Protection Climate Resiliency Brown Woods Acquisition Project. This was where we received $763,050 grant under the MVP program that was awarded on September 16 by the Baker-Polito Administration. This appreciation from the Board reads, "In appreciation of your hard work and collaborative efforts to preserve open space in the town of Littleton," really through this grant, this really allowed us to purchase that property and be successful at town meeting. And really thank Amy very much for her handling of that MVP grant program and success in awarding that funding.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Certainly, I know there was Sleckman-Gerbig at the time and Sleckman-Glaevey also played a role in that acquisition, as did yourself, Mr. Layden, but really Amy Green procuring that grant and bringing all the stakeholders together to really get that across the finish line was huge and really helped procure that property. And it's a great asset to the community. So thank you very much, Amy.
It's also a giant pile of money.
Yeah.
I mean, really, like, that's a huge grant. It really is. It's very impressive.
You read the app, that was the request, and that was granted.
Fantastic.
Yeah, it's amazing. It really is, so.
Touched all the buttons. Yeah, it's good.
Great stuff. Great, thank you. So next on the agenda, we have Chief--
Madam Chair, is there a vote associated with that?
Sure.
Is there a vote associated with that? Okay, and I already echoed the comments you just made in the town meeting, and I'll tell you, smoothly, that went through as a direct reflection of the impact of that grant, also the community's stated desire to pursue these sorts of things. And Amy just made it all come together. So kudos to her, and I'll make the fall in motion then regarding that recognition. Move that the Board vote to recognize Amy Green for her success in the town receiving municipal vulnerability preparedness grant to the amount of $763,050, which was crucial in the town's acquisition of the 119 town road property.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, Mr. Knox.
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste.
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus.
Yes.
Mr. Glaevey.
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. Motion is approved as written. Thank you very much, Amy, again, for your hard work and dedication. And now we are on to Item Number Two. We have Chief Pennard on the call.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm excellent. And Madam Chair, if I could, I have three candidates here tonight in front of you for part-time dispatch. I don't know how you want to do it, do you want to bring all three in at once, or do you want to bring one at a time, or if you just, I'm going to go through who they are and whatnot. They did an extensive interview process and background with Deputy Chief Patterson and Dispatch Supervisor Bill Harold. All three young, nominated candidates before you tonight for the appointment. The first one, do I want to introduce you? It's Kristen. Our first candidate will be Kristen Malanson. Kristen is a resident in Bloomberg. She's 20 years old. She's currently a full-time student at Northwestern College in criminal justice. She's anticipated to graduate in June of 2021. Any questions or comments for Kristen?
I don't have any.
No, I have complete faith in our chief. Yeah, I think, I echo the same sentiments, that you and your staff have already vetted these folks, and we have complete confidence and excited to get these folks on board and welcome them all.
No offense, but I hope I never have to call you.
I'm sorry.
It's nice to see a face anyway in these times of COVID, so, welcome.
Yeah. Welcome, Kristen.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard, Kristen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second candidate is Adam Zaprakopoulos. Adam is a resident up here in Littleton. Adam is, was, recently graduated from Littleton High School and did a two-year intern program here at Wolf PD. Due to COVID, he wasn't able to finish out his intern program yet, but he's currently a student at Millsburg Community College and very involved with the Harvest Sports Club and outdoors out there. So, Adam?
I actually have a couple of really tough questions for you, Adam. No, welcome aboard. Same sentiment.
Welcome.
Thank you. Great to have you, Adam. Good to meet you all. And our third candidate is Max Burness. Max is a resident of Westford. He is a full-time student at American University in Washington, DC. He made his administration with Meyer and Justice. He's anticipated to graduate in May of 2023. Max, I know you're always in DC, but he's the COVID-19 student, and it's all virtual, and it's going to be all virtual for a while, from his understanding of an email he received today. So, Max, the Select Board member. Nice to meet you all.
Hi. Nice to meet you too. Welcome aboard.
Wish you all luck.
Sorry about the full remote.
That's all right.
It's no good. Okay.
Thank you.
You guys are remote all day in classes, and I hear remote getting a point of your job. Right, right.
Right. All right. Great, I think we're all set. We're ready for a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I will move that the Board vote and appoint Mr. Kristen Malanson, Mr. Adam Zaprakopoulos, and Mr. Max Burness as part-time communication officers.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, Mr. Knox.
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste.
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus.
Aye.
Mr. Glaevey.
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. Excellent. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and so next on our agenda, do we have Diane Corry, the Town Clerk?
We do not. I'd like to speak on her behalf. I mean, she's had some very long days, weekends. It seems that it's--
It was granted.
So before the Board is the warrant for the Board's signature. This is for the general election. Also, Diane did provide me with a little bit of information regarding how early voting is going. So just to read from her email, we have sent out almost 3,500 ballots, received back about 50%. We have had 1,200 voters that have voted in person from the 17th through today, the 26th. Early voting goes through Friday at 2:00 PM. And just as a reminder, that we have 7,570 registered voters here in Littleton. So, you know, we're getting through, significant portion have already voted as of today. And again, for people watching, early voting continues this week. It ends 2:00 PM on Friday, in advance of Election Day next Tuesday.
It's pretty impressive. I mean, roughly 3,000 ballots have been cast already.
Yeah.
And so hats off very much so to Diane and to her staff, and also to all the residents that are stepping up and helping out and pitching in and volunteering.
Yeah. Anyone that has stopped into Town Hall, you walk into the Town Clerk's office, and there are just boxes all over the place. There's really barely enough room for them to navigate through to their desks. Just so many boxes and mailings that have gone out and also copies of ballots for the big, essentially a big rush that's still expecting on Tuesday.
So I voted today, and I spoke to Diane a little bit. She said we're on pace to reach about 85% turnout, which was what we had in 2016, which is a very impressive number. If they mailed out 3,500, I think it was 6,400 registered voters in Littleton, or 7,000, something like that. Anyway, she's doing a huge, a huge amount of work right now, and, yeah. All the poll workers as well, as you mentioned, Chuck.
Yeah, thank you to all of them for their, their hard work, certainly. Appreciate it. So Diane Dickerson, Executive Assistant.
We do have just that one.
There's a motion, Madam Chair.
Oh, we have a motion on that one?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
There's a motion on everything these days. They're trying to deuce.
I know.
I will move that the Select Board vote to sign the warrant for the 2020 general election.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, Mr. Knox.
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste.
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus.
Aye.
Mr. Glaevey.
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as written. And now we are on to the next item, which is Letter D.
Okay, so we have Diane Dickerson, Executive Assistant to the Select Board and Town Administrator for Zoom, and she's going to just give a little bit of update on our annual reporting as a designated Green Community.
Excellent. Good evening, Diane.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, Joe asked me to give you an update, and I'll give you just a little bit of background of the Green Communities Program. I started in 2017 on the program, which includes annual and designated community, annual designated community reporting, and everything to do with competitive grants, all the way from application preparation, submission, project monitoring quarterly, quarterly and annual grant reporting and data collection. And I've nearly completed the annual designated Green Communities Report, which Joe needs to sign, and you have an incomplete draft in your packet. And just for some background, you might wonder what's in the designated community report. It's all about electricity usage, all heating in vehicles, fuel usage, building stock, all of that is entered into Mass Energy Insight. And then annual reporting includes all energy consumption for public buildings, vehicles, and LEDWV, and also reporting on any renewable energy initiatives, vehicle inventory, and building stock changes. It also includes status on previous and current year grant projects, and discusses anything that may impact our energy consumption in town. I wanted to share the good news that we've been awarded over $1,063,000 in Green Community monies, having received the maximum competitive grants, grant awards each of the years 2017 through 2020. And last week, we met with our regional community and vendors, and had to kick off for our $1,000 project award. And that award focused on the school again, but we also have some monies to improve the LED lighting in the multipurpose room. That's pretty much it. I want to thank all the departments that have wanted for input requests from me, and also especially to Dave Riley, Connor Riordan, and Steve Whitton, for their support.
Great. Thank you very much, Diane, for that, for that update, and thank you for your hard work as well. We certainly appreciate it. It's very, very impressive. We're fortunate.
Diane, I'm going to jump in here, because I met with Connor Riordan last week, and just to kind of talk about other opportunities, and it always, it seems like we put you in a tough position, because we are looking for opportunities to take full advantage of the grants, the monies that are available, and it's kind of an 11th hour, and then we often find ways through the schools to do another retrofit or LED lights in the parking lot and that kind of thing. So proactively, Connor and I had met with a couple of businesses in town that shared some of their concerns relative to energy use. And one of the things that one of the businesses asked about was our electric vehicle charging stations in town. And I noticed, just from going through the, I appreciate the full report, because I was able to go through, and I noticed that 49 different communities, cities and towns, were awarded 55 grants, and those grants averaged about $22,000 apiece to place electric vehicle charging stations. We're fortunate, because we have LED, but there may be some opportunities for LED to work in collaboration with some of our business community, where more and more businesses are, they're going electric, where they might be able to put a charging station in their lot. We're right on 495 and Route 2, the closest, I forget what they call it, power charging station or something like that, is down by Cabela's down--
Supercharger.
Supercharger, yes, yes. Located down by Cabela's in Hudson-Burling Line. So that is something that hopefully, maybe I can have a conversation with you, Diane, and we can, we can hook up with Connor and see if we can do kind of a private-public partnership and do something with some of the businesses in the community to show that, you know, we want to work together and collaboratively with them.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I'll thank Connor and school and all the other departments with, you know, asking for, you know, what their ideas are as to what we might be able to submit. But one thing I will say, though, is because we reach our maximum on a lot of the award submissions, going forward, we're only going to be allowed to submit up to $100,000 for grants going forward. But we start collecting that information now, planning, and we have to submit after, usually, they haven't given us the deadline, but generally, we have to submit by the end of January with all of the requests.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Walk.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? The motion, Mr. Park?
We do. Move that the Board vote to have the interim Town Administrator sign this designated Green Communities Report.
Sorry.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor, Mr. Knox.
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste.
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus.
Aye.
Mr. Glaevey.
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. Thanks again, Diane.
It's a lot of work.
Next, we are on to public input and members' updates. I'm going to ask if anyone is planning to provide input at this time regarding Halloween, the Halloween discussion, if you would just wait until we come up to that topic on our agenda, which is Item 5A. But otherwise, we're certainly welcome anyone who wants to provide public input.
I don't see any hands raised at this moment.
All right, great. So now we have member updates. Anything, Mr. Knox, you'd like to share?
Just talking about the letter that Joe talked about, about the flu shots. It's nice to get something like this. Sometimes we get a lot of other mail that's not, this is all positive, and thanks to people who were in the flu shot, the other people that worked hard to get it done, and how appreciative this person was. I don't know what it was, but it was great to have a letter like that sent to the Board.
I'm going to back, I'm going to jump on the back of that, Joe, and it is great. And the only thing I'd ask is anybody that does send anything in, we typically don't act on anonymous anything. So anybody submits, it's typically not positive and anonymous. But we typically don't accept anything that's anonymous. But if you do submit something, we just ask that you let us know who you are.
Right, right. It's helpful.
Yeah.
Joe stole my member update. I was going to talk about the, Joe, Joe Layden, I was going to talk about the voting, but he said it all.
Okay, great. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to jump in. All right, go ahead. Paul, go ahead. I'll finish up.
No, I think we'll do it.
The only thing I was going to add is that we've got, we're working hard, it's an update really from the Economic Development Committee, and we're working hard to make sure that, we're trying to find opportunities, you and I have spoken a few times on this, and looking for opportunities to help our businesses in town. So any businesses that are taking advantage of different programs, or are trying to find out about different programs, I just ask that they reach out, you know, fortunately, to the Town Administrator's office, and, you know, Joe, you can get ahold of me if you want, and I can kind of jump on top of that. One of the businesses that's coming to town is Amazon, and that's, that's something that we're very much excited about, but we also are going in eyes wide open. And I will, I have to take my hat off to Chief Pennard, because he has reached out to other communities. I know that the town of Milford has had some challenges, and I've also reached out to a couple of the selectmen in Dedham. They have a facility down there, but they've had some issues with all kinds of traffic. So mostly, I want to offer up to the business community to reach out to us, because we, we don't necessarily know what's available, and we want to try to help you to, you know, through these times. And the Chair actually asked for some, some information to be put on our website today, I think. Yeah, and it's up there now. So there are some resources available to you if you're looking to find out what's available through the state and the federal government.
Great. Excellent, thank you. And Mr. Glaevey, you didn't have anything?
No.
Okay, all right. So I was just going to, to echo what Mr. Sleckman-DeCoste just advised.
Sorry.
That's all right. Informed the, the public, on the town website is recent information regarding the funding recently announced by the Baker-Polito Administration geared specifically to help local businesses. So that is on the homepage of the town website, which is www.littletonma.org. And also, there's information on there regarding the Affordable Housing Trust has two rental, emergency rental assistance programs available right now for residents in Littleton. There's plenty of open slots available for those programs, and we'd, certainly, if you or anyone you know is struggling to cover the costs of their rental expenses right now, please reach out to us. Again, on the town website is the information, littletonma.org, or you can contact Amy at Elder and Human Services. Her number is 978-540-2478. But we want, really want to just be more proactive in getting the word out there about this, this important program that really is geared to help people every day, but especially during the pandemic. We have special requirements and expedited approval processes in place to help people, to make sure that they get the assistance they need, you know, during the pandemic. The other thing I wanted to mention is I wanted to just give a shout out to Donna Daisy Trainer. She's provided an awesome program throughout the pandemic, helping Littleton residents by providing handmade masks, and other residents in Littleton have obviously donated the mask to her. But she has basically a drop box that she's had outside of her house, where you can leave a donation, any amount of money that you can afford, or if you can't afford anything, that's okay too, and you can take a mask for yourself, you know, a family member, for your children. She's collected gift cards, she's collected donations through Venmo, she's provided cleaning supplies and gift cards to families in need for the community for many, many months now. And I just wanted to give a special thanks to her and everybody who's helped support her. It's really, you know, enduring to what Littleton's all about, to see someone just arbitrarily step up and say, what can I do to help? And this is the way, you know, I want to help other members in our community. So I don't know if Donna's watching, but if she is, I just wanted to personally say thank you to her on behalf of the Board. And finally, the Littleton Rotary Club is starting a Littleton Rotary Corps. And basically what it is, it's a database of residents. They're collecting people who just want to volunteer and step up in case of a crisis, or just for any initiative that might come along, whether it could be something as simple as raking leaves, or if someone has a house fire and they need, they need immediate assistance and donations. Paula Vella contacted me, he's a member of the Rotary Club, and asked if I would share at our meeting tonight. So if anyone is interested in joining up and being a part of this group, please contact Mr. Vella at avella.p@comcast.net, or you can contact him on this phone number, 978-354-7235. But he's looking to just create this, this group, this database of volunteers, which I think is an awesome idea. So thank you, Mr. Vella, for putting that together. And I signed up. I'm sure other members of the Board did as well, so. Yep. So it's all good.
Shameless, all into it.
Right. So that's all I have. Thank you. And now we are on to, Mr. O'Brien has joined us, I see.
The Treasurer.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. Good, and yourself?
Good, thank you.
All right. So unfortunately, I got some paperwork for you guys tonight. So I have a couple of items to be signed off on. Basically, it's the $899,328 loan from the Masked Clean Water Trust for the PFAS mitigation. So basically, the temporary pipe that is going in to help with that, that issue. So I have a few, few items that I'll hand out. Basically, the project will be completed in May of 2022, and it's sort of a 0%,
Langos.
Until we permanently finance it. Pretty good deal. Couple of things coming up, just to make everyone aware, we're selling-- We're selling our few bans on Wednesday, the 28th. So in a couple of days, which will roll to bans that we will issue on the November 20th. Couple of projects that are on there are going to be mostly the library and then some of the water sewer ones. So happy to provide more detail, but we'll be back on the 9th to provide the sale of the ban results, sorry.
Okay, great, thanks. Any questions or comments from the board?
You'll have the details relative to the rate and all that kind of stuff when you're back on the, yeah.
Definitely.
Great. Mr. Glavy?
Yeah, I do have a motion, and for full disclosure, I hope this motion carries, because I already came down this afternoon and signed the mark. Don't get me a liar out of you. Have moved that the board has elected to adopt the form of the vote prescribed by Boncousel, a copy which is attached here to and may track hereof, relevant to the approval of the $899,328 loan for the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for emergency funding for the water treatment facility PFAS authorized October 28, 2019, special town meeting, Article 12, at 0.00% interest.
Get us more of those.
Second.
I'll work on it.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Decost?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. So the motion is approved as written. Thank you very much.
Nice.
Thanks.
Some autographs, right?
Oh, yeah. So there's three of the same, and then one, the last one's the note.
Okay. There's a lot to sign here.
Could be worse.
You got nothing?
Okay, so we can go, you want to start maybe on the next item while we're circulating those? So the next item on the agenda is a consideration of the Board of Health's recommendation to cancel Halloween this year. It's my understanding that there was a recent Board of Health meeting. There was a discussion regarding whether or not to hold Halloween this year, and they made a vote recommending to cancel it. I don't know if the Chair of the Board of Health is on the call, Mr. Layden?
Yes, she is.
Great.
Hi, everybody, is it ready?
We can. Good evening.
I have to be on, go out to the camera?
Oh.
So just to correct you a little bit, we did cancel Halloween, or recommended they cancel trick-or-treating.
Okay, okay. Can you?
Sorry.
No, go ahead, Lisa.
So we just found that there's a little bit of a lag time with the numbers. And so although this week we're in the yellow, and we only have 6.6 cases, that is from last week. So the week before that, we had 11, and we were in red. So it doesn't take very much to get us into the red and have us, have it be kind of a dangerous situation. So in order to keep people safe, keeping the schools open, keeping the parents able to work, so the kids go to school, we thought that it would be a better idea to cancel trick-or-treating.
Okay, thank you.
The vote was to recommend.
To recommend, correct, Lisa?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks, thank you for that. I, I know there's been some discussion about this over a number of weeks. And I, you know, I appreciate that the numbers can fluctuate, basically, week to week, if not day to day, and it's a tough decision. You know, that being said, and this is just my personal opinion, and I want, Chief Bernard's on the call as well, and when I ask him to come into the call and provide his thoughts as well. But I just feel that it's really a personal preference, if people are aware of the recommendation by the Board of Health, but they wish to continue with trick-or-treating, that they should be able to do that. And if they want to participate, they can. If they don't, then, you know, either stay home or, you know, shut your light off and don't leave any candy out. I think it's certainly something that would be difficult for the town to enforce upon our residents, and I'm not sure that it's something that we want to enforce. So I, actually, I'm going to ask Chief Bernard at this time if you wanted to just provide your comments, and I see Chief Wodzinski's on the call as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Sean.
I have said it before, you know, this comes down to a parenting issue. If you don't feel safe, and you don't want your child going out, then by all means, don't go out. And if you don't want to pass candy out, then shut your lights off and don't answer your door. You know, I was talking to someone earlier today, and we were talking about this discussion. And, you know, with COVID, and a lot of people that have been kind of cooped up underneath this, the older people in town, actually, I think are looking forward to the kids coming to the house trick-or-treating. I mean, they can pass the candy out at a safe distance. And, you know, any kind of normalcy that we can get, I think we should be doing it. But again, if it comes down to enforcement issue, I'm not going to have my officers ripping candy bags out of kids' hands either on the streets. So I think you are correct when you say that, Chair, that it's going to be a tough enforcement issue for us as well.
Okay, thank you.
The board decides tonight.
Great, thank you. I don't know if Chief Wodzinski had any comments he wanted to make. I see he's on the call.
Good evening. Pretty much like Chief Bernard said, you know, it does come down to a personal preference. And if you're going to be out there, at least, you know, exercise, you know, do it with caution. Wear your mask. Yeah, I know everyone's going to be wearing, you know, a Halloween mask, but you can wear that underneath and take those precautions and social distance if you decide to go out. And, you know, everybody's pretty much outside as it is. So, you know, the environment alone is a little bit better than, you know, being in a, like in a gallery, inside of a home or something like that. So it's just my opinion on that.
Okay, great, thank you, Chief.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Last week, I did put out a public safety announcement, press release, to, you know, on our social media sites, and I said it all at the Littleton P.S. So I'll re-send that out again if you'd like me to.
I'd appreciate that. Great, thank you. So any comments from the board or questions from the board?
I've got some comments. My biggest reference point is the governor. And, you know, he's been, in my opinion, relatively conservative throughout the entire pandemic. And the fact that he has not issued any type of ban on trick-or-treating, in part for fears of folks taking it upon themselves to have their own trick-or-treating party or Halloween party, that kind of thing, indoors. So I think that to impose more of a restriction than what the governor, who has unlimited resources, but certainly has resources that we may not have available to us to make this type of decision, I think that for all the reasons that the chiefs have stated, and the fact that the governor hasn't imposed any kind of restriction, makes me lean towards, not lean towards, I think that the kids, for the families that wish to do it, the kids should be allowed to go out and trick-or-treat. And like everybody said, if you personally are at home and don't wish to have people coming to your door, turn your light off, don't leave candy out. And, you know, it's a personal choice, and people have to respect that. So.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Nordhaus?
I, it's my understanding that the Board of Health is the authority in matters of public health, and they voted to cancel trick-or-treating.
They didn't. That's the vote they took.
What?
They voted to recommend to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So, but they felt strongly enough about it to vote, to tell us, to recommend to us that we cancel it. And the CAT, the COVID advisory team, presented some very compelling information about how it spreads. I would say, I also know that Groton and I think Air have both canceled Halloween, or, sorry, have canceled trick-or-treating. And that surrounding, you know, and social media sites from those towns are talking about, you know, what's the best place in Littleton to hit? So I think we're going to get an influx of people from out of town. I don't think that's going to help matters. And I guess the final thing I'd say is, I think it's more important to keep schools open and to keep local businesses open. And it is, it is an increased risk for more, more cases of COVID. I don't think it's, I understand the disappointment, I do. I understand the enforcement. I just, I really think it's less important to do trick-or-treating than it is to try to keep Littleton healthy and get us back on track to open and fully functional as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Knox, do you have any thoughts?
I have thoughts both ways. I agree with everything you just said. You read about the amount of cases that have started to go up tremendously. I think there were 1,200 new cases just from yesterday to today. And I hate to go against the Board of Health, who makes this recommendation to us. And that's their field that they should be doing it. Now, on the other hand, too, for all the reasons that was just stated, all the reasons that we had that, I don't know whether you saw it, that former Selectman Chase Gerbick put a nice note to us and listed all the things. And it's good to have the kids get out and be able to do something that's normal. And I think in this case, because it's outside and because you can keep a safe distance and with parental help, follow guidelines that I think the Board of Health gave us a week ago. If that's, did we get something? I put something on my webpage, I thought it was a guideline that they gave us about Halloween. And a week later, they recommend not to. So I'm confused with the whole thing and how it should go, because I would just hate to see something come up, one case would come up, and someone could remotely say it was due to trick-or-treating, and we voted for it. But I'm up in the air in this, and I can be convinced either way.
Thank you. Mr. Glavy?
Yeah, Matthew touched on an issue that I had heard a lot, and I thought that would be more front and center as a rationale for Littleton acting to cancel the trick-or-treating. And that's very specifically the apparent social media chatter in Groton and Air, that some think we might be indeed hosting more people rather than even the norm if we vote for it. And I don't know whether we have anything concrete on that, either be interesting or the Board of Health chairs, they can say on that, or whether Chief Bernard's aware of anything on that end either.
Right, I've heard, Paul, I've heard the same thing about Facebook chatter, about other towns that have canceled their trick-or-treating, and wondering about, you know, where's the good place, what's a good neighborhood in Littleton to go trick-or-treating? And the reason, one of our reasons why we switched last week is two weeks ago, we wanted to wait and see what the numbers were for this week. You know, we could still probably, I guess, we're meeting again on Wednesday, but the numbers for the state and the town don't come on Thursday afternoon, so we don't know if we're going to be red yet. You know, we're in yellow right now, but there's cases that we know of that haven't been tallied yet, I guess, for lack of better word. But we could go in the red again by Thursday. So that's why, Joe, that's why we changed our mind, because we wanted to see how the numbers went. And just knowing what the numbers are now and the cases that haven't been counted yet, that's why we decided to make that recommendation.
But on the other side of that, Lisa, there are also cases that could be falling off the list.
Right, or there could be, like, the general.
Yeah, I mean, it's a fluid, it's a fluid conversation.
Right, exactly. I mean, everything, all the numbers are going up.
Right.
And if those communities thinking that they can come here because we have it, we will probably have bigger, bigger group of people that, you know, knows what kind of community it is that they're coming from. They could be coming from an already, you know, red for past three weeks.
I mean, all the numbers are going up in Massachusetts. It's, I don't, I think it would be foolish for us to assume that we're the exception to the rule and that the numbers in Littleton are going down. The trend is up, and it has been for the last month or six weeks. And again, people are getting complacent, and more people are getting sick as a result.
So also more testing.
Yes, but adjusted for testing even. It's positive rates per test, not just total positive rates.
So Lisa, this is a question for you. Have we taken any other precautions? Have we cut back on, I know there's organized sports, I believe, are playing? Or any other, if we change, you know, I think we increased the number of people that are allowed in this room, for example, from six to seven. Have we, is there been any other steps taken back because of the increase in cases statewide?
At this moment, I don't think. I know hockey is being canceled in the state. And, but I'm not sure about soccer. I saw soccer happening Saturday morning, too. So not that I know of.
If I could just address the chatter, I tried to substantiate, because I had heard that, that there was some chatter on Facebook. I tried to substantiate that through some friends and communities that have said that trick-or-treating is not, is not happening. And they weren't able to substantiate, but they may not be in the same groups or, you know, whatever they're called, the social media stuff. But if in fact that was a fear, first of all, those neighborhoods are inundated by out-of-towners every year, which is the fact of the matter. I mean, it's, there's certain neighborhoods, I know, I'm not going to say them out loud, so people will know. But we do know the neighborhoods that do typically have a minivan that pulls up at the end of such and such a street. And they're not Littleton residents that are getting out of these vans, and they're going and trick-or-treating to the houses that have the full-size candy bars and whatnot. We certainly could have either DPW or PD put up some of the orange paper signs that say no parking along the roads that we fear will be inundated. And I don't think that would be too much, too burdensome, burdensome to try to restrict that kind of thing. So, and I mean, I'd even authorize if we felt as though it was necessary to ask chief to have an extra patrol on or an extra two patrols on, just to police that, that component. Because it's, it's, it's not like there's a whole lot of neighborhoods, but there are a few neighborhoods that typically get hit by out-of-towners, that they literally show up in vans and.
Right.
Large SUVs.
Right.
That'd be a recommendation I'd make if we, you know, if we decide to go forward. I don't know, just in the polling that I've done of folks, the phone calls and emails that I've gotten, for the folks that represent, that there's, there's been much more of a push to allow people to make their own choice, because we're not telling people they have to go trick-or-treating.
Right.
We're just saying if they choose to do so, they may.
Right, given, right.
Something I didn't think of, too, is that if we cancel it, who's someone going to complain to? You can't send out the police, like the chief said.
There's no way to police it, yeah.
Go out and take the candy away, but I guess I'm leaning towards saying yes, only with the idea that it's outside and it's spaced out. Even, people are playing sports now, and they're a lot closer.
Do we have some, we have two hands raised?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Hearing the board discuss and say this, you know, it's easy to say, well, it's a matter of choice, but I don't know if that's reality. I mean, if you're having it, then, then I can't picture the household where the parents are going to say to the kid, yeah, they're having trick-or-treating, you're not going out. That's not going to happen. And then the similar peer pressure in neighborhoods, you know, you might say there's sure there's some older folks that might want to see their kids coming, and there's some others that would definitely be fearful. But if they don't want to be the people on the street knocking on your candy, then they're going to go wrong with it. If the question's put before us, then, you know, it's essentially, I think the towns would be drawing a conclusion, one way or the other, that we either thought it was safe or we didn't think it was safe, depending upon how we decide. So if we're going for it, and we're sending a message, we think it's okay. And if we don't, then, you know, that I would, I'd say that we are, at least, you know, in my case, I'd say, you know, I don't mind disagreeing with a board on a. my case, I'd say, you know, I don't mind disagreeing with a board on a policy issue, on a money priority issue, but in the case of Board of Health, if they make a recommendation, which they very rarely do on a public health basis, then in my mind, that's, that's kind of their area. And, you know, absent something dramatically wrong, I would defer to them on what they deem to be a public health, you know, what should be the right public health.
Concern?
So I, I, I'm inclined to, to support the Board of Health recommendation here, not thrilled about it, but I am interested in hearing what, you know, citizens have to say to it.
Okay. So we have some hands raised, Mr.?
Yes, we do. So first, we have Debbie. Looks like, I'm just trying to see if, if LCTV actually beat me.
So. Is it Debbie Solis, if you'd like to say your name?
Yes.
Pregnant pause. This is, this is Debbie Solis. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. I'm on Sorry Road. First, I want to thank you for the, the time spent on this topic. I, I will just tell you straight off that I feel pretty strongly that we need to cancel trick-or-treating. And it's not because I'm a Grinch or anything, but I'm a little concerned about the large groups of people that will be coming together. And while there's a lot of conversation about people should go in small groups, that doesn't happen. I happen to be in one of those destination neighborhoods that Chuck talked about, and there are multiple minivans that drop off. It's not even that they're parking. They drop off, they go to Dunkin's for a cup of coffee or to someplace else for a drink, and then they come back a couple hours later and pick up their kids. So I'm not sure if the no parking signs would work very well, although it couldn't hurt. You know, we're talking about outdoor, about the sports and stuff, and you know, sports that have been canceled. I do have the child that plays soccer and I can tell you that the rules are very, very different. There are limited spectators. It is not your typical, normal sports season. And so I feel that that's also outdoors, excuse me, and that's also masked. So if, if MIAA and the governor and felt that it wasn't a good idea to do sports, how can we say it's, it's a good idea to go get candy? The other thing is, there's some conversation, I don't remember which one of you said it, that, you know, we expect people to pay attention to the rules and, and parents to police it. I mean, people don't pay attention to the rules. There was one weekend in Littleton where there were three relatively large parties happening. Unfortunately, people aren't paying attention to the rules. I have, for many, many years, had groups of 15 or 20 people at once at my front door. And normally, I absolutely love it, but I can't control who comes to my door. And you might say, well, you can shut off your lights, but that comes with its own set of issues. So if I shut off my lights, is my house going to get egged? Because that has happened in the past for some people. So probably my greatest concern about this is, it's on a Saturday night and there's going to be a lot of extra people out trick-or-treating anyways because it's a weekend. But I am on Facebook and I do see the chatter, and there are plenty of people that want to come into town because they feel, they want their kids to have something normal. 2020 isn't a normal year. And while I would love to have some normalcy and I would love to see the kids, I, I just don't know if it's worth the risk. I want to make sure the schools stay open so our children get educated as best that they can. And I just, I don't, I believe this is a risk that's too big to take.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have John K.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, John Curzwood, 171 Hartwell Avenue. Thank you for taking my comments. I called into the school board meeting as well, related to their, their, their decision associated with going to full remote during the Thanksgiving period. And I sent them a bunch of papers, technical literature related to, you know, COVID-19 and respiratory viruses. So I'm going to kind of regurgitate a little bit of what I said to that board. Essentially, you know, I'm starting to get to the point where I say, are we listening? You know, I keep hearing people saying, let's follow the science, let's follow the science. Well, we know a couple of things, and I'll regurgitate. And so, the American Pediatric Society published in August that children are not the spreaders of COVID-19. And I'll submit that paper to the Board of Health as well for their review because whether we cancel trick-or-treating, and by the way, I'm not a big Halloween guy. It's just, I'm calling in to say that we need to start getting some courage because there is significant damage happening, not just, you know, because of trick-or-treatings. It's, it's the whole lockdown mentality and fear that's driving these things. So anyways, I have a paper that I'll, I'll submit to the Board of Health. But anyway, they, in that paper, they show that kids are not the number one drivers of the transmission, okay? Secondly, let's talk about the actual lethality of COVID-19. The CDC, and you can go to their website, and I'll submit this to the Board of Health as well. The CDC and both the Board of Health Organization now have published estimated infection to fatality rate, all akin to the flu. That sounds controversial if you listen to CNN and Fox News, but what I'm lying is, that's what they publish. And I'll submit that to the Board of Health as well. The other thing that I, I wanted to make sure that the board is aware of, and this is a paper that I did not submit to the, the school board, is that Schulman, and I forget the exact date of his paper, but Schulman showed that transmission of respiratory diseases is a strong function of absolute humidity in the air. So basically, as the absolute humidity goes up, infection transmission goes down. And I'll submit that to the board as well. But I'll tell you right now, if you cancel, let's say you cancel trick-or-treating, it is going to have no impact on infection rates. It's, they continue to go up, and they'll go up to a certain point, and this is, this is going to happen. We know it's going to happen because it's a function of the ability of the disease to transmit. It's just, it's nature. It's been proven in the past. So we have got to start looking at these things and start saying, you know, we can't defend it everywhere. You can't defend it everywhere. It's impossible. In fact, if you look at, I think Chelmsford, there was a news story where, I think it was the nursing home in Chelmsford, they, they had three deaths or five deaths, I can't remember the exact total, but they had an outbreak in the nursing home. That has to be the most locked-down place in society right now, and they can't keep an infection out of there. So I think we have to take a risk-based approach. And from a risk-based standpoint, outdoor activities with kids is very low. And I think the other thing that the police chief or the fire chief, I can't remember who said it, but I mean, there's a certain amount of volunteerism, I suppose you could call it, but people that want to participate can participate. People that don't want to participate, they don't need to participate. And I'll just, I'll keep it at that. I think, I think we are, are, I think fear is driving a lot more than, than, than actual risk-based approaches. And, and, and that's, and so whatever way you guys vote, it, it's fine with me, but, you know, I really hope we can start getting back to normal. And the last thing I will say is, I think it's called the Great Barrington Declaration. And this is a, a paper from an open letter that came out by leading epidemiologists, one from Oxford, one from Stanford, and the other from Harvard. This has over 10,000 signatures now. And what they're saying is, basically, we cannot continue to proceed with these lockdown measures. We have to take a better risk-based approach. And that's what I'm, I think, why I called into this meeting, is to just let the board know that this is a low-risk activity and we have to start getting back closer to normal. And, and I hope, I hope we can, we can do those things. And I'll gladly submit those papers to the Board of Health for their review, whether, you know, you vote up or down tonight. So thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you.
So, Matt, I'm sure, just to let you know that we have two other people also raising their hand, and Lisa asked to have Mike Zeldin brought in to also talk from the Board of Health perspective.
Okay. So we'll take the next two public input, and then we'll talk to Mr. Zeldin.
Okay. So next, we have Laura Beltrami.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. I just have a couple of points, and one of them is that I've been watching the Board of Health meetings for the last, I want to say, at least three or four meetings. So I was there, before we were yellow, then we went to yellow, then we went to red, and we're back to yellow. And I, I share the concerns of the individuals who are worried about people coming in from other towns. You know, I'm lucky that I don't have younger children. I mean, I have four kids, but they're all teenagers. You know, the biggest thing that I've heard from people in the last, I'd say, month or two is that they want to keep our kids in school. And my greatest worry with the, you can make your own decisions as to whether or not to participate, is again, the other towns coming in, only because if, if they're of higher risk, say they were yellow and red, our yellow numbers weren't that far off from going back into red. And then when we heard that we would be hybrid, you know, during the Thanksgiving, Christmas breaks, a lot of people were upset about that. But yet, they want to have trick-or-treating. I guess, I don't understand why we have a Board of Health if we don't go with their recommendations. They've been following the facts. They have the most amazing epidemiologist that does research for them, Katrina Hadberg. She's been following the numbers. The numbers support not having our town open for trick-or-treating. I know that's not a popular opinion. I have, you know, friends in town who don't agree with me and I don't agree with them, but that's okay. It's just that I think if we have a Board of Health who is recommending to the BOS that we cancel trick-or-treating based on facts and based on numbers, that, and we have three selectmen or select board members who are leaning towards that, that we need to support the Board of Health in their findings. You know, I just, I don't understand why, if we look towards the finance committee on dealings with our finances here in town, why we would not support the Board of Health in their recommendations dealing with this. That's pretty much what I wanted to say. I know a lot of work has gone into them coming to that decision. I appreciate the work of the police department, the fight department, the BOS, the BOH. I mean, it hasn't been easy, but as many people said, 2020 isn't anything but normal. You know, I'd like it to be normal as well, but that's not going to happen unless people really pay attention, follow the rules, and hopefully, you know, follow the recommendations of our own BOH. Thank you so much. Thanks for all you gentlemen.
Thank you, Laura. We have one more, Mr.?
Yes, we have one more. I just would ask that the Zoom handle, Zoom user, state their name first for the record so that we can rename that, that name before then taking the rest of the comment.
Please.
Hi, it's Christine Roethausen, from Chelmsford, a Zoom user on my account. I think I can. Thank you. I think it's irresponsible to follow anything but the guidance of the Board of Health. Yeah, it ended lockdown for two weeks and got through this. We keep doing these little half-measures and letting people decide, and it's not working out. You know, people were freaked out about going photo mode and freaked out about the kids sitting next to us at shape-a-lane, testing positive, and now everybody wasn't notified about it. I mean, it was a horrible conspiracy. Businesses are closing because of COVID. You know, we need to follow the guidance of the Board of Health first stop. It doesn't, you know, nobody wants this, it's not fun, and it's terrible that we don't get to have normal. But if we don't get serious and burn with our brains instead of our hearts, we're never going to go back to regular. You know, like, we didn't kill 10,000 people this year, COVID did, in Massachusetts alone. I just think, like Laura said, we have a Board of Health, but we, we got to listen to what they're telling us and follow their guidance. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now we have Mr. Zeldin.
Sure, thank you very much. My name is Michael Zeldin, 11 Lower End Street. I'm a member of the Board of Health, and I'm one of the members who voted in support of the notion of recommending to the select board that we curtail, cancel trick-or-treating for Halloween. The reason for this has more to do, has to do more with the fact that, that John Kay's comments about what the American Association of Pediatricians indicated in August, what he left out concipit, and it's totally understandable why it's left out, because the notion that we have here a virus which now has an ability to infect anywhere, two to five times more people per hit than the flu virus, is a very difficult thing to grasp. It's the closest thing you can get to a sure thing, even on casual contact, indoors or outdoors, and especially indoors. So that has always been a characteristic of the virus. We only recently, or let's put it this way, it has only recently reached the level of consciousness because, very frankly, of this wave, or so-called wave. The second thing we keep in mind, it is very important, very important that we do everything we can to keep people safe or give them guidance for keeping safe and keep the schools open in a safe manner, just for the reasons already mentioned, that people can go back to work and know that their children are in a safe, learning, and healthy environment. What has happened is a result of the opening of the state, is that people are beginning to move around. And as everyone repeat, as everyone knows, the virus knows no boundaries. And more precisely, because of the moving around, it's not so much other people purposely coming into town or drifting into town. Littleton has always been, as other towns along 495, a place where people pass through, ginslee, coffee, whatever, doesn't matter. So the potential for spread is very large. As far as children are concerned, it is, is very, very true that children generally do not transmit as readily supposedly as adults, except when they do. And when they do, it really takes off, not because they infect other children so much and that, that leads to illness, it's that the children themselves transmit to other susceptible individuals known as adults. Not all adults will suffer disease, they will be carriers. And now we hit on the major reason why, at least in addition to the fact that we've moved indoors, we have moved it around the town, all innocent, there's, there's nothing to cherish going on here. There has been relaxation, observable relaxation of masking, of keeping distance. So we know that the general environment is, shall we say, open to attack by this, very, very. very successful virus. So rather than take the risk of having people ill, children, teachers, staff, adults who have nothing to do with the school, relatives, older relatives, keep in mind, we do have a fairly sizable number of seniors in our town who are getting out and about. I see them, and I'm sure all of you do. The cancellation of trick-or-treating does not mean that Halloween for kids is gone. There are other ways, I'm sure parents have been thinking of good ways to have Halloween equally exciting for the kids. As far as normal is concerned, I have no idea what people are talking about when we say we want to go back to normal. This is the new normal to be tried, and until a vaccine is readily available to enough people, where we have at least some measure of control over the spread of the virus that leads to disease and disabling after effects, that will be the new normal. And make no mistake about it, unlike the flu, this one has more than trivial after effects on children, on young adults, on teenagers, on adults, on seniors. So the prospect for this town, right at the moment, is very good, because once prompted, I've seen this town pick itself up, put on the mask, keep the distancing, and maintain hygiene, it's a town of common sense. So for one night, we're asking people to exercise what is now known as the new normal common sense. So I hope the Select Board follows through and supports our recommendation. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Zeldin. If I could just ask one question, how many cases currently are there in Littleton?
Cindy, I think in an effort for privacy, all we have is 6.6 as of last Thursday.
Okay.
Two numbers don't come out until Thursday at 4:00.
Okay.
And then it takes a little while to figure out how many, what are the actual numbers.
Okay, great, thanks. Thank you, Lisa. Chuck had to step out for a minute to take a call. I certainly appreciate all the comments made by the Board of Health this evening, especially Mr. Zeldin, raised some very good points in my mind. So this is a tough call, but I know I started out the conversation saying, you know, I don't see how we can enforce it, and I think, you know, I'm in favor of holding trick-or-treating, but with all, you know, the bottom line is, it was recommended by the Board of Health. Mr. Zeldin brought up some good points this evening with respect to common sense. It's a tough decision. I just, I feel, I feel bad for the kids, I really do. I just, you know, 2020 has not been a normal year whatsoever, so it's a tough decision on behalf of the Board to make, but I think the bottom line is, it is recommended by the Board of Health, you know, that we not hold trick-or-treating this year. So I think I'm going to defer to their recommendation. I'm going to change my position, but I'd certainly welcome to more comments from the Select Board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm proud to be even brief for having listened to intelligent input from some good folks with different perspectives. Yeah, similar conclusions is your own. I don't get into the weeds of the details. One is, in an instance like this, the question is, do we trust our Board of Health, who's charged with responsibility, make recommendations on public health? And for that reason alone, I would lightly back them on this. And then the other instance is, just in the bigger picture here, is we're now put in position, making decision, whatever position we take when we are setting the message. And the message is either it's fine, or it's not. And I have no doubt that if we actually said, go ahead and trick-or-treat, they probably wouldn't get any repercussion. I don't know that for certain, and I don't want it to be the message from the town Select Board to the people that this is enough under control that we can go ahead and do this. And that just has its reverberations of a lot of different ways that we can't even anticipate now, that encourages the sort of behavior that we're just trying so hard to get people to think otherwise about. So, you know, for those two reasons, one, that's the Board of Health recommendation, and two, we've been disciplined on bigger issues from March till now, and trying to hold the line, and, you know, until we have some good news, and I'd like to be consistent with that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Glavy.
Good. I'm just going to hit the high points here. I agree with Paul. I think that keeping schools open and businesses open is more important. I think that whether or not, you know, canceling trick-or-treating not only sends a message here, but will undoubtedly reduce traffic from out of town, and we should follow the guidance of the Board of Health. We should follow the guidance of the Board of Health.
Thank you.
That's all.
Mr. DeCoste?
I'm just going to echo what I said before. I trust the professionals in the guidance of the governor and his office. He's got a lot of people that, we have a Mass Department of Public Health, and they they've opined that people should be able to trick-or-treat. It is outside, and the risks, nobody knows, and I think John Kay from Marwalev, you know, made some of those points, that we, if we do or we don't, the trend is going to be whatever the trend is going to be. And I kind of share that same opinion. I don't feel as though shutting down trick-or-treating is, is going to have an impact. Either way, I think that people a lot smarter than I have made some decisions at the state level, and they've got a lot more resources than we have. And I appreciate all that our Board of Health does, but like us, the volunteers, that, you know, are kind of learning on the job, and that's, you know, that's kind of what we're doing every day on the Select Board, and every day we get better. And I think, you know, I appreciate anybody that steps forward and dedicates that time and the amount of time and effort that they've put into this. But I do think that the fact that Ayr and Groton are the two towns that Matthew had mentioned that are not having trick-or-treating, every other town around us is having trick-or-treating. So, you know, and so I just, I don't know, I think the governor's message speaks more clearly to me, and the message from the residents that have reached out to me, the information that I've gotten from our two public safety professionals, who do, that this is their job, this is what they do for a living. So no disrespect intended towards anybody that feels differently than I do, including the Board of Health, but if they felt strongly enough, they could have taken the vote at their last meeting, and they certainly could still do so on Wednesday.
Right.
But I don't think, I don't think we, as a board, should shut down trick-or-treating.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Knox, do you have anything else to add?
You know, my heart really says, let's get back to normal, let the kids do something that is special, that they waited a whole year for, and we haven't been able to do things normal for a long period of time. But from what Mr. Zeldin pointed out, the Board of Health, and I think Paul pointed out, that it's the Board of Health's charge and responsibility, this is their field, and they made the recommendation. And then my, I have a problem professionally saying, okay, we have a Board of Health, they give us a recommendation, and I'm going to go against it. So my heart says that we should have it, but I think the facts tell me that we should call it off.
Right.
I don't think they should have kicked the can down the road to us, and I think they should have had the guts to step up and take the vote the other night.
I don't doubt that at all.
Right.
So.
I agree with that as well.
Yeah.
I think it's their call, honestly.
They should have made the call.
I think they, maybe they're asking us to vote as a courtesy, or, but I, I still feel like we should follow their guidance.
Right.
Respectfully disagree.
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, Lisa did ask that the Board of Health have opportunity for one more comment.
Sure. Lisa?
So Mike has his hand up, but I just wanted to add that this was not a decision that we came to lightly. We had a, we had some difference of opinion, but we eventually voted unanimously on this with the information that our epidemiologist and our health agent has given us about the counts that we're going to be seeing, and, I don't know, I'm trying to think of something. Yeah, so let's see what my task is.
I've got this page right now.
Thank you, Lisa.
A lot more information and research.
Right.
At mass.gov.
No, and, believe me, I'm torn, I'm torn about this as well, but I think the bottom line is, is that we have a Board of Health for a reason. They made a recommendation.
Then we shouldn't take a vote.
So we could actually, I'm sorry, Lisa, go ahead. Oh, did Mike want to speak again?
I think we were under the assumption that you guys were the body of town government that could cancel it. I don't know, Mike, do you have something to say about that?
Well, I'd like to pick up because it's instructive for our thinking that Chuck mentioned, when he said several times, "We don't know," and he landed on the very reason why the Board of Health has been so cautious in this particular instance. The one thing that this state doesn't have, it's not a criticism of the governor or the group, and if you, if you attend the meetings, as I have and several other members of the Board of Health at the state level, you will hear this echoed, "We do not have a rigorous, responsive, preemptive test system. We don't test before the fact. We test after there's been an infection," which is, from your description of the virus, very clearly too late. So all I'm saying at this point is, you got it right, Chuck, we don't know.
Right.
And the problem we have is that not knowing, but we have to go on what we do know. And we do know that social distancing, whether you're indoors or outdoors, wearing a mask, definitely more helpful indoors, very helpful outdoors, and good hygiene do cut the race. In fact, it's been, that, those kinds of things have been compared favorably to a vaccine, and being effective in reducing spread, which is what this is about. I'm sorry to take your time, additional time, but please, keep in mind, you're right, we don't know, and that is a major and serious problem. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so at this point, I don't think there's any need for any more discussion from the Board. I mean, the question is, do we take a vote, or do we just take no action?
If in fact, we're not the body that should take action, then we should, I'm of the opinion that we don't take any action.
Yeah, but with the senior board, we're in question again here, with a senior board that usually takes care of activities in town, we have a recommendation from the Board.
Right.
They have a meeting on Wednesday.
I mean, I personally, I think we should take an official position on it.
I agree.
It's before us.
Yeah.
You know, it might be worthwhile to suit up, you know, start out with counsel after the fact, we would have authority, and I'm guessing it's us, I, you know, I don't know.
Probably.
It could have been the Board of Health, two valid reasons, but either way, here's the vote. Joe had the presence of mind to prepare a motion, so I've got one ready here, Madam Chair, if you wanted me to read it.
Please.
I'll move that the Board vote to cancel trick-or-treating and all related Halloween activities on Halloween Day, and I would add, on per the recommendation of the Board of Health.
Can I ask a question? What's it mean, "all related"?
Right.
I have no, no problem amending the motion as to how it was printed before we, you know, except for friendly amendment, they're out except for friendly amendment, to say move the Board vote to cancel trick-or-treating.
Traditional trick-or-treating, perhaps? I know that's the language that many other communities have said, in favor of allowing traditional trick-or-treating.
Yeah, no problem including that. Vote vote to cancel traditional trick-or-treating on Halloween Day pursuant to the vote of Health recommendation.
Second.
Perfect. Motion's been made, and second it, all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
No.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. So the motion is approved as dictated by Mr. Glavy, and we are, we have voted in favor four to one to cancel traditional trick-or-treating. What, Chuck?
We've decided to tell the public how to live their lives, outdoors.
I think we're, I know.
We should shut down sports. We're taking that, but we should shut down all public sports.
So my birthday's on Halloween, does that cancel too?
We'll discuss street matters on our next item, I guess we tell the public what to do with that.
That's a, that was a tough one.
Seriously, why should we have sports? Our kids are bumping into each other and spitting and everything else. I'm not, I would never vote for that either, but that's, that's the kind of the...
Right, the vote's taken, let's move on.
Right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Chief Pennard and Chief Wodzinski. So I know, next item on the agenda is town-wide 25 mile-per-hour speed limit discussion dependent. This is something that the Board had talked about previously, I think it was maybe one or two years ago, with Mr. Started at one point, and so there was a few...
Chief King.
Wow, was it when Chief King was here? So something that a few people had mentioned that maybe we could revisit just at this time, just because more people are home, a lot of people are out, out and about around town walking and whatnot, so I...
What birthday's up right now, though?
Um, honestly, a few members of the public came to me, and they said, "Whatever happened with that?" And I said, "You know what? I forgot, I couldn't remember what happened with that. I know it's something that we had talked about, and we just kind of, we didn't take any action on it, so I just wanted to revisit it at this time."
But didn't we take action on certain streets?
We did, yeah.
But it was, it was like the Lake area, or things like that. I think we passed enough, we voted on something...
Lowering the speed limits on a number of roads off of Goldsmith towards Lake.
Yeah.
Right, right, but it was...
Which made sense, because the streets are so narrow and small.
Yeah, they're just not marked.
Yeah, and I think the language is something, if it's not posted for a speed otherwise than the presumed speed limit is 25, right?
Is that what we decided on?
No, that's not what we decided on, that's what's proposed.
Right.
Yeah, I remember, that came up in the discussion before, that it was proposed, but it's not a new concept.
Nope.
So if we don't do this tonight, how, what are, what's the stance now? Like, if a road isn't posted, what happens?
Residential's 30, it's what the state statute says.
Which is 30?
Residential is 30.
Okay.
Unless otherwise posted.
I agree with everything that's been said, I want to bring the chief in, but didn't we vote on those, that certain number of streets?
I believe we did.
Okay.
Yeah, and then at the time, Chris did opine as to whether or not he could do the signage and all that kind of stuff, and I'm not sure how many signs actually went up, and maybe Chief Pennard could speak to that.
Right. Chief Pennard?
I know that Chris did put some new signs up, he does have some money for more signage. But yes, Chuck, you're absolutely right, it is 30 miles per hour in a thickly settled zone, or a business district, or a business district.
Right.
The time I was asked to, I looked into, could the towns that actually have the 25 mile-per-hour posting, the town of Air has it, and I talked to the deputy chief last week in regards to it, and he said it's been actually amazing how well it's worked out. And just those of those streets that have no postings whatsoever. You know, again, Joe, it would be similar to the Lake area, Milwaukee areas, and some of those areas that are all unposted this time.
Thickly settled.
That 25 mile-per-hour posting at the edges of town would actually cover it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The, the signs that you're talking about, are they actual speed limit signs on those roads, or the ones at the edge of town that say, "Townwide limit 25 unless otherwise marked"?
That's correct.
Which one is it? Is it the second one, or?
The town, yes, 25 mile-per-hour unless otherwise posted.
Okay.
When you drive to the end, you'll see the sign.
Yeah, that's, I was thinking of exactly that, rather than trying to post every single road.
Right.
You put those up at the 10 places where most of the people come into town?
Right.
That's correct.
Got it.
Right, yeah, so we, we had this discussion, like I said, a while back, but we just kind of left it, so I just wanted to revisit it tonight with the Board, just to see what your thoughts were about maybe actually instituting that 25 miles per hour townwide unless otherwise posted. Mr. Glavy, do you have any thoughts?
Oh, yeah, I, I thought we'd given it a good, you know, airing publicly before, and I was supportive of it then, and I appreciate you, or whoever was behind bringing this back up again. I think the appropriate thing to do, unless still more members object to it, is have a hearing, and, you know, I think we probably ought to assemble a little bit more data and get it a little more grounded in how it all will actually work. But sure, let's go ahead and, you know, have the hearing.
Is there a disadvantage to doing it?
If the signage goes up, it just, we don't want to do something and then give Chief no teeth. I mean, if the signage doesn't go, if the signage goes up, it's, that is data that I would like to see. Chief, you, you're a great collaborator with the Massachusetts Association of Police, of Chiefs of Police. That might be something that, I don't know, if you guys have, you guys have like a listserv or something, you could send a question out and say, hey, who, who has a... you could send a question out and say, hey, who has a townwide speed limit? Where you could get some information back from some of the communities that have recently changed, and potentially gather that data for us, you know, was it, how well was, like, A, or gave you some information that was well received, and it is actually slowing people down? You know, what does the department think, and as far as public safety? You know, what kind of data points might we be able to speak to and justify doing it?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. I can definitely gather some more information. And to go back to the other point prior to that, Chuck, it gives us the teeth that we need. It'll write the citations in those areas. So yes, you're correct.
Chief Pennard, can you think of a downside to doing this?
No.
Okay.
All right, great. Any other comments from the board? So what would be the next step, Mr. Leyden?
One, just wanted to know if you want to have any public comment. There was two raised hands. And then the next step, I have a draft motion, just to then schedule a hearing.
Okay.
It's just like the last one, and in the board's packet, included a copy of the legal notice when you did approve specific, specifically identified streets and roads for that 25, 20 mile per hour and 25. So we'd have to do legal notice and all those things. That would give us a chance to do the research that would be needed and identify a date that would work for the board.
Okay, great, thank you very much. We can certainly take public comment if it's pertinent to the 25 mile per hour speed limit that we're discussing right now.
Okay. So we have Beth Cale.
Some music.
Beth, are you there?
I just see her static.
Yeah, I do too. Maybe she forgot.
Is she on mute, maybe?
Not here, not up there. You can see the mic.
Kenya.
Yeah, there, now she's on mute.
Okay, maybe she didn't.
She's got to push that little button all the way into the RC port.
Okay, and then we have John Kay again. Forget his last name, that he had.
John, are you there?
Sad item, Kerzwick.
Yeah, it's John Kerzwick. Yeah, it's actually fortuitous that I called. So John Kerzwick, 171 Hockville, Ohio. Somebody asked if there was any downside to this, and I don't know exactly, I'm not a lawyer per se, but a long time ago, I received a traffic ticket in, some ago, and the road was posted 25 miles per hour. And I was like, I cannot believe they have this posted 25 miles per hour, because it's right near the home depot, I mean, coming up, or Onramp onto 93. And so everybody's accelerating to go up the Onramp. So anyways, I did a little research and legal research, and you might want to have your town council look at it, because my understanding is there is a statute in Massachusetts that basically says what the, you know, thickly settled speed limit can be, and what minimum speed limits you can, you can post. And any speed limit that doesn't match that statute would have to have a speed, a speed limit done by the Department of Highway. Now, I don't know if that applies just to, you know, state highways, and I don't know if town roads would be included in that, but it's certainly, and I guess other towns have done it, but I just wanted to offer that as a, as a watch out, and, you know, I'll leave it to, you know, the folks on the board and the chief to maybe take into that a little bit, but yeah, so I just wanted to offer that comment.
Great, thank you.
That's a good heads up, and Chief, you could probably answer this better than I could, but I think that we can change, not on state roads, but we can change speed limits that are different than what the state statute says within our own community. We have that flexibility, but Chief, you could probably.
That's correct. And without, we'll follow up on Chapel 90, Section 17, unposted areas.
Okay, great. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
So then we have Beth back one more time to try to see.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep. Can.
Great, thank you. So Beth Cale, I live at 29 Harwood Ave. And I have really, I was part of this meeting for this topic alone. We live at the, I guess, the bottom of Harwood Ave, and because of ways and whatever else and other of the truck restrictions, there's so much traffic that goes up and down this road now, and there are, the speed is crazy. And I know my husband calls, calls and says, "Hey, we need to have some, some patrol here." And because of COVID, there are probably 15 or 20 people, including children and older people, that walk up and down this road all the time. And it would be great to have, to have a speed limit that is in town and would make everyone at least think twice about how fast they drive. So that's my input, and I appreciate you listening.
Great, thank you very much. Doesn't look like there's anybody else, so we will schedule that for an upcoming public hearing.
Ready the motion, Madam Chair?
Please.
Okay. I'll move that the select board vote to schedule a public hearing to amend Town Code Chapter 205, Vehicles and Traffic Regulations by establishing speed limits on ways within the town.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Aye.
Mr. Knox? And Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as written. Thank you. And now we are on to Item C, Cut Through Traffic.
This is also in response to getting a lot of input from the presidents.
Yeah, Mr. Leyden?
Adam Street, remember this was referenced too?
The Edward, it was Edward's Drive and the cutting through the, between the glass place and the bike shop, I believe. Adam, sorry, Adams, yeah.
Okay.
Cutting through the parking lot.
Yeah.
I think that was part of, that was.
A bigger, a bigger conversation, yeah.
Initiated the conversation, and then with, like, one of the other folks mentioned. Beth Cale just said about the ways and Google Maps and all that kind of stuff for sending people through town, especially when 495 Route 2 backs up, we're getting a lot of folks that are coming down roads that.
Right, and we've.
Have traveled like that before.
Right, and I know we've discussed Adam Street with Mr. Stoddard in the past, because that is an issue, that is a concern, but I think he actually provided some guidance in the past regarding what we could or could not do with respect to Adam Street and cut through traffic on that roadway.
Yeah, I know that Chief Pennard has also reached out and also looked at this, so he may be able to provide us with a little information as well.
Sure. Chief?
Absolutely. I did reach out to the complaint, talked to them a couple of times, had a couple of different email transactions with them. I've been trying to get in touch with the owner of the building there, the building's a glass company, his name is Matthew, to see if we can do some temporary cones across there, to see if that'll alleviate some people cutting through the parking lot and zooming onto Adam Street. And we've also stepped up enforcement down there during the busy times, morning and afternoon. And, you know, I think the biggest problem is, is the parking lot probably cut down, just shoot the parking lot that way. We'll keep it posted, and I will stay in touch with the residents in that neighborhood. I know we did put a solar speed limit sign up there, so as soon as we have the information of the speedings and traffic off of that sign, I'll be sure to report back to the board and know.
Great, thank you. Do you know of the concerns with commercial vehicles?
No, I think it's more just passenger vehicles cutting through there.
Okay.
In the email we had about this, you mentioned that you, both you and Chris Stoddard think that speed bumps don't work, like discussing long-term. I'm curious why that is.
People get used to it, and just go over it faster.
Yeah.
And snow removal is another.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Chris doesn't like them because of the plow.
That's a good point, I hadn't thought of that. Okay.
I know that when our real estate office was in that building, not the, not the building with the glass places, but.
Across the parking lot.
We used to watch it constantly go through there. I actually had a sign that's at the back of my house that this is not a cut through that I had back then, but it still didn't work.
That pothole doesn't even stop people, because the pothole gets to be the size of Lake Erie at times.
I, I mean, I feel for.
How do you know that, Chuck?
From going to Champion Cleaners.
Right.
All this dry cleaning.
Look at me.
So there's, so Chief, there's nothing really specific that we could do with respect to that roadway?
The parking lot's kind of property, and, you know, I'm going to continue to locate the owner. Hopefully, he can put some temporary cones up, and see if it does alleviate the problem. I know there's one permanent structure up there to block it off completely. But again, just as we put up the solar speed limit sign that Chuck doesn't like, but we put it up anyways. Well, we'll continue to do radar enforcement there, and we'll take it from there.
Right, because I mean, even doing like a one-way, that wouldn't work on Adam Street or anything like that. That was what I was thinking along those lines, or presidents only, I mean, how do you enforce that?
Tough to police. One of the things, I'll comment on Chief's calling me out there, but one of the things that I thought of going down there was similar to what Chris Stoddard just did at where Foster Street takes or comes off to Hadawan and goes to the right, where we did the bump out with the curbing there. If the person, if the owner doesn't want any permanent structure, that's not going to work. But if there was granite curbing that was better defining that parking lot, where you had, you know, a strip that was not a pass-through, I mean, that whole thing's a wide open lane. So that would be one thing that may mitigate it to some degree, because people do come in pretty tight, when I watched. They come in pretty, if they're coming from Adams towards the common, and they're going to, say, Donnellan's, they're coming in pretty close to that shrub line on the right-hand side there, and they're coming right across that parking lot.
How much time does that save? You just have to go around the.
The golf course.
But if you go in any other direction and you're heading.
Yeah, that I, yeah.
Don't want to get into the common traffic, yeah.
I understand.
You can zip right up Adam Street and on the Goldsmith, and there you go.
Right.
I didn't see as much of that, Joe, to be honest.
Really?
Yeah.
Because that's what we used to see.
Yeah.
But I have another sort of, go ahead, Paul.
I was just going to say, this is to Chuck's point about the curbing, I'd thought along those lines before too, but I wonder whether, you know, established curb cuts might prevent us from being, I don't know what legally they have, that property has to access the Adam Street, you know, as a matter of record, or just by use, whether we even get away with doing that.
Even drainage, Paul.
What's that?
Even drainage.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Might need some theater.
Longer term, you know, Ms. Cale talked about ways, and I won, I know that it, there have been issues with some residential streets where Google Maps or ways routes people through these residential streets just because it's, there's traffic on the main arteries. And I thought I remember hearing that you could designate the roads as, you know, "Don't use these. These are residential streets, you can't use them." I don't know if anyone knows about that or has ever even looked into that, but, and that might help a bit with people who are just following, following the map on their phone.
I was just sharing the screen, just at least to give people a little bit more. You know, I can definitely understand as far as, there actually seems to be some.
So Jake's Auto Body's on your left, right?
Yeah, yeah.
This is at Brian Burke's office straight ahead, on the other, on the other side of the street. Corner Meeting House.
Yeah, you can see his office directly across the parking lot.
I did share that email with the Transportation Advisory Committee, and they were interested, especially because it was close to the corner, at least taking a look to see if there's any opinions and thoughts that they could provide as it related to this.
Great, good idea. Okay, any further discussion on that item? Okay, so now we are on to the day after Thanksgiving.
Just, I guess there is further discussion on that, and so are we just kind of saying there's nothing we can do about it, or is there something that Chris and the chief could take a look at?
I think the chief said he was going to do that.
Yeah.
All right, so that is our takeaway?
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll make sure to put together a memo for the board in a couple of weeks, as to what has transpired over the next couple of weeks.
Great. That's perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, great. So now we're on to Item Letter D, Day After Thanksgiving. This was a discussion that we had, I think, maybe two or three meetings ago, regarding providing the town employees, Town Hall, and the Highway Department with the day after Thanksgiving off to show our appreciation for them and their hard work and dedication during the pandemic. As many people know, we provided some additional bonuses to our first responders during that time. But I know that there's a lot of town employees who have worked very hard as well, so I was just thinking that this might be just a simple way to provide, you know, just a thank you from the board to them by giving them an additional day off to spend with their family, or, I mean, as much as they're going to spend time with their family Thanksgiving during the pandemic, but this is something we talked about. We decided we wanted to have Labor Council take a look at it. They did take a look at it, and they provided some guidance to us, which is in the form of the motion, I believe, or you have that language, Mr. Leyden?
I have that language here.
So I didn't know if there was any further discussion or questions from the board about that?
I don't have the language.
I don't, I haven't, yeah, have you, did you distribute that? It's not in the packet.
No, I can, I can also read it or put it up on screen so that people can, can see it as well.
Okay.
So essentially, what we're doing is we're closing, we're closing the Town Hall and all town offices, other than public safety.
Correct.
For essential workers.
Right.
Whereas in the past, we've kind of said, it's, we haven't really made a determination, but relative to the COVID and the amount of work that folks have put in, and we have recognized our first responders, and this is an opportunity for us to, not the most productive day in Town Hall, frankly. Whether or not it's a productive day for the DBW, I wouldn't be able to speak to that, that'd be something Chris could speak to. But that's, that's kind of the approach that we're taking, that we'd be, would have that day off to recognize our employees, recognizing that there's not a whole lot that may be going on that day and as a small token of our appreciation.
Correct. Right, and there's the language up on the screen now.
Okay, great, I see that, and if councils, we don't want to follow any of the contracts with this language, and whenever you're ready for it, I'll be happy to.
Can I, but I, can I ask one question? So if you, if an employee is part-time and isn't scheduled to work that day, do they get a holiday day?
They do not.
Because I think they should. I mean, that's fair, that would be my expectation as a standard employment practice. If there's a, there's a holiday, in any other holiday, you would get a.
No, it's a part-time employee, personnel, personnel board is applying that if a part-time employee has a Monday, that's a holiday, they don't, they don't get that time back some other time.
Or they get another day off that week?
Right.
They don't.
Okay, I think they should.
Right.
I think we should reward all, I think we should reward all of the, all the employees.
So with the advice of Labor Council, they said to just basically keep it the way it's worded up on the screen, and to not, not do that, not get into that. They thought that this was fair and equitable based upon the policies that we have in place right now.
It is a true, Madam Chair, that the, our acting on the departments and buildings that we have control over doesn't preclude, for instance, whatever the school does, whatever the library may want to do, other departments that are outside of our purview, right? Is that correct?
Correct. Any other discussion?
No.
Do we have a motion on that, Mr. Leyden, or?
All right, now, Joe, this is the language I should read, right? Now, I'll move that in recognition of the hard work and dedication of all town employees caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, Town Hall and Highway Department will be closed the day after Thanksgiving, November 27th of 2020. All employees except for essential public safety personnel, who are doing their work that day, will receive paid time off without deduction from your available pay lead.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Knox? Mr. DeCoste?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Glavy?
Yes.
And Cindy Napoli is yes. The motion is approved as written. Thank you. And so now we are on.
Thank you, all the employees.
I know, certainly, thank you to the. I know. Certainly, thank you to all the employees. It's not been an easy year. Certainly appreciate all their hard work and dedication. And, you know, one of the things I actually want to take this opportunity to mention to the board is a lot of times we thank the department managers that are before us and the department heads that are before us, but we never really get an opportunity to thank the employees that support them. It might have worked on an initiative, initiative that comes before us as well. And it's really difficult because we don't see them behind the scenes, but, you know, I just want to make sure that they know that we recognize their hard work as well. And even though the thank you doesn't come directly to them, it's not that their hard work doesn't go unnoticed. So I hope this in some way helps them know that we do appreciate them and, and thank them for all their work year round. So now we are on to our joint meeting with the Planning Board to discuss the Master Plan Implementation Committee Budget Work Program and Communication.
Okay, so we have Maren Toole, Town Planner, Mark Moninari, the Chair of the Planning Board, as well as Anna Houston, Vice Chair, with us.
Alright, great. Do they have, hi, oh, there's Mark. Hi, Mark. He's muted. I just, do they have a quorum or is this an official joint meeting or?
It's, it is posted, but they don't have a quorum of members in Zoom.
Okay. I don't know that we were planning on voting on anything anyways.
Right. Some things we can't vote on anyway.
Right. Mark, hi, Mark.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Madam, hi, Anna.
Mark, hello, everyone?
Hello.
Mark, you're not outside by a fireplace, huh?
Oh, I'm disappointed.
No, I was going to, but I was a little banged in when you, when you kept ready for tonight. Because I was ready an hour ago. No, I wasn't.
Okay. Thank you. So we, this is a joint meeting for, I think for a few matters, actually, and I don't know, Mr. Leyden, were we going to discuss something with Maren's job position or?
Planning Board goals. So that was, that was something that unfortunately I wasn't able to get out to the board, a summary as far as their goals. My understanding is that coming up at the next meeting of the Planning Board, they're also going to be discussing their goals as a board on what they want to work on for the next year. There was a, with the MPIC, there's a couple initiatives that are underway. And one of the things that we want to discuss was, you know, potential use of funds to continue with implementation and there is MPIC meeting tomorrow. As far as how we can leverage some of the existing funds that have been appropriated by, by various town meetings to achieve some of those goals, you know, specifically around the commuter rail station. I've also reached out to DHCD and received some information back as far as some potential funding sources, but then it becomes always a question as far as timelines and whether or not we can receive funding in a timely manner that then would allow us to go before annual town meeting in May with something. So headed as, as, you know, larger discussion and make sure that also that communication piece as far as initiatives of the board, how it relates MPIC, implementation of the plan, as well as the, the Select Board, how we can make sure, maintain communications so that as things come forward with the board, that we all are aware as far as what each other is working on and make sure that we're, we're meeting the goals of the board as well as was discussed like two meetings ago.
Right, right. So as the board knows and as the Planning Board knows, the Master Plan Implementation Committee was jointly appointed by the Select Board and the Planning Board. Historically, there's been funding requests that have been made for master plan initiatives to the Planning Board that didn't really provide, that the Select Board wasn't really involved in those discussions. And I know that we've had conversations with the Planning Board in the past about just trying to rectify that and make sure that we keep the line of communication open between our board and the Planning Board with respect to master plan initiatives specifically. And so I had asked, at the last Master Plan Implementation Meeting, I'd asked Maren how much money there was in that budget currently because the Master Plan Implementation Committee's meeting tomorrow night to talk about their goals and what they, you know, initiatives that they might want to undertake this coming year. So she provided me with that response. But then I, I realized, I found out after speaking with Cheryl that there's some funding remaining from past votes that had been taken at town meeting for master plan initiatives that were funded, allocated specifically to the Planning Board. So I wanted to just maybe get from the Planning Board some background on what initiatives you're planning on in the short term that might be util, these funds might be utilized for. And if there's anything, I know we've had some discussions about maybe utilizing the services of a consultant and for Littleton Station, and I know the Sustainability Committee is looking for consulting services as well. So I don't know, Mark, if you can speak to what currently is on the Planning Board's agenda for utilization of some of the monies remaining?
The only thing we have in front of us right now that we're actively working on is the train station.
Okay.
So there's, if we need sort of consultants or, you know, I think we have, I need to correct this, we have $8,000 left to fund the, Jerry, the pilot rate for Springtown meeting. We might need some more of this money to finish that off, but that's the only thing that we have in front of us right now.
Okay. So I guess there's-
If, if I may?
Sure.
So one of the other questions that I had, Maren, maybe you can add to this, is we had initial conversations with Mark Resicot about TDR and I don't know where Jerry is on that and whether or not additional funds will be needed from this particular pool of dollars. Because TDR obviously would lend itself to the other bucket of money close to, what is that, close to $12,000. So I wanted to make sure that we took a look at that because those dollars are in a separate pocket for, for open space and that would be the one initiative that we do still have going on.
It's a public that may not get on the ECRN's TDR's transfer of development rights, correct?
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Glady.
Yes, this is Maren. I would agree that the two initiatives in front of us are the Littleton Station area and the transfer of development rights, understanding that transfer of development rights might play into the development of the train stations.
Okay.
Correct. And I would also say that if there are any other items related to housing that need to be accomplished, whether or not that will be another topic for the Planning Board to be able to, to undertake. So, Maren, if there's anything related to housing that you can think of that needs to be accomplished in this year?
Thanks for the question on the housing. The Affordable Housing Trust is working with our consultants, our regional housing consultants on housing need, especially age-appropriate housing. And we have some of the answers now. It's not clear to me how much of the remaining, of the $12,000 that was set aside for that, how much of that we will need to refine that answer. I guess it's just more of a policy question with the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you, Maren. So, so basically, the, the $8,000 that was allocated town meeting in 2018 is spoken for. You're going to utilize that for consulting services for Littleton Station, is my understanding, just to recap. And then the $12,000 remaining that was allocated in 2019, you believe that's going to be used for, to continue with the TDR, Transfer Development Rights Consulting Services?
Yes, that would omit the EBA, EBA grant where we're working on TDR.
Okay.
And same thing with the consultant in the station area. A lot of that work is, that work is continuing with the EBA grant.
Okay. Alright, great. Thank you. Because I know there was some discussion about possibly utilizing consulting services, specifically Mr. Bergman, inviting him back to help with the Littleton Station project. He's, you know, utilizing him in conjunction with Mr. Leyden, Mr. Anzaldi, when he comes on board, really to get the state's attention with respect to the Littleton Station project and initiatives. I, you know, certainly that project in itself is everything that the state's really asking many communities to achieve and it checks so many boxes. And I just thought, you know, that bringing Mr. Bergman in, he, as we know, working with him, he's pretty well-connected and first at finding state money and grant money and basically getting the attention of the state at that level. So he does, he is available to help with consulting services in that regard. And the other thing is the Sustainability Committee was looking for, asking for a sustainability coordinator to help with the town of Littleton. And I know that the town of Concord has one and I didn't know that it was really something that we could afford for the town, but apparently there's a grant available that would cover the cost of that.
That might be a good collaboration, you know, do an inter, inter municipal agreement with a box borrower or someone like that.
Yeah.
Just, it's, we're right now, we're level-staffed, level-funded, so adding any kind of positions like that are-
Right.
Not really. So we can look at it, but I wouldn't say that we're going to be able to-
Right.
Find the funding for it.
No, exactly. So the other reason, that would be another reason to utilize the services of Mr. Bergman, who is very versed in sustainability initiatives. Because, you know, to your point, in all likelihood, we can't actually hire somebody, but just to see what guidance and suggestions he might have for us as a municipality in that regard, I think would be beneficial as well. But given what we've just heard with respect to the money that is available for master plan initiatives, it doesn't appear that there's any funding resources available for that at that time since this money's already spoken for with respect to the, except for the, there's 2,200 remaining in the main, I'm going to call it the main bucket of the master plan of the Improvementation Committee budget. So.
And I just, I just had a follow-up question. Maren, the $8,000 that Dodson Flinker is going to be doing the design guidelines, that's, that's separate $8,000 than the 2018 master plan remaining balance, right?
Correct.
So-
They, that's for Dodson Flinker is under the EBA grant. And that's, the work that we're asking to do is the design guidelines and that's only one step of the probably five steps that we have to do between now and Springtown meeting.
So the reason why I just want to get that, the clarification is that other $8,000, having gone through 40R process, the $8,000 with Dodson Flinker isn't going to get us very far. It's going to get the design guidelines, but then there's the application to DHCD, which needs to be done in advance of adoption of zoning. That, that's not complicated, but it requires some technical work. And then also, we have the draft 40R bylaw that Judy Barrett and her group had done, but I anticipate that there would be some fine tuning that would need to be done in order to make sure that, one, the Planning Board, as well as the town, is, is comfortable enough with that and that it incorporates the, the items that we want to have within that bylaw and properly referencing the design guidelines that would need to be prepared. But that there, there may be a little opportunity to say, well, if we have the original eight plus another eight and if we're able to either utilize four, $4,000 from one of the others, you know, getting up to, to 20 at least, then make sure that we can package things. And it's still not going to give us as much latitude if we had a bigger budget, but it starts to be able to hit some of those items that then we may be scrouching to try to, to find either time for staff to complete it or at least just to have the consultant to consolidate things into a project rather than giving us one product that then we have to sort of piecemeal to figure out how to then achieve the other items.
Right, right. So are there any grant opportunities out there right now that might assist with this?
DHCD did give us some links and I'm following up on those. The question ends up being timeline. We're at November, knowing that we essentially have three, three and a half months before we really start, need to have outreach with residents on a bylaw for, for town meeting. The $8,000 that is currently slated and later on this evening, which is going to review draft con, contract for those services, does include public outreach, but there's going to be some other work that we're going to want to do. And especially if they're, if they're doing some of the work as far as looking at density, looking at what the town wants, it'll be pretty easy for them to pull together the application to DHCD. That would be needed in advance of doing the zoning bylaw. So it's not a lot of money. It's also not a lot of time. And that's one of the challenges is that if there was a grant, by the time the award happens, we're then dangerously close to, to town meeting to really make any use of it.
Okay.
So I think going forward as far as looking outside of the core of, of that area next to the train station, that may then be a good opportunity for looking at things a little bit more. Is that my two-minute time is up?
Yeah.
Town meeting.
Chuck Berry's going to come in with the big hook next.
Exactly. To then take it to another level, because we know from that station area plan, there were other areas that they wanted to look at.
Right.
But the easy thing was right by the train station. That's something I think this focused effort could really hone in on and then more engagement to look at what else could happen. And that's that housing choice, which then is a grant program that would be available for and some of those other things. We may then be on a better cycle to take advantage of those.
Okay. Alright.
To your point earlier, there's, there's, a lot of the different secretaries at the executive level at the State House see this location specifically. There's, there's locations around the state, but they see this as one of the locations that there's, it's a home run, to your point, it checks a lot of the boxes, whether it's housing and economic development or, you know, there's opportunities for mass work grants to get us what we need in order to make it work. There's, there's a lot of, a lot of eyes on it, if you will. So I think to your point, it won't take a whole lot of heavy lifting and it's, we could probably have a pretty good win. But we do need to make some investment and make sure that we get our ducks in a row.
Right. So do, is there a way to put together like a schedule of what we're looking at and how much it's going to cost?
Yeah, I think we could put it together and, because no matter what, it would have to be sort of an amended scope compared to what Dodson Flinker prepared for the, the working group in the first place. And to coordinate with the Planning Board and Board of Selectmen as far as next steps. And just to make sure that, that we, we identify those things so that we know before May what needs to be done to get something not only to town meeting, but then also through the state process, make sure both Planning Board and Select Board are on, are comfortable with the direction that the working group was recommending from a zoning vehicle.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mark, do you have any other comments or from your board?
No, I think Joe can do it right on the head. You know, we don't have a lot of money. We want to utilize what we do have and time is definitely a necessity. We'll try to get this to Springtown meeting.
Okay, great. Any other, any questions or comments from the Select Board?
I'm curious when the affordable housing on the Brown property would start to be developed, designed, and whether we, whether the town's going to pay for some of the design work on that.
So at least I can comment on that because we're still in the due diligence phase. We have 90 days from when we sign that PNS. So basically, we're looking through December to make sure that it's property that we want to acquire. Mainly, we're, we're undergoing Phase 1 of 21E right now. You know, being an old, old property that was used for agricultural purposes, you never know what could be hidden under the ground. Want to make sure that we're not acquiring a property that then was more of a liability. Once we go ahead and purchase, then that would be the time, start working with engineering company to start carving things off, maybe utilize some funds for doing test pits, just to identify then what could, could happen. But we'd first want to get through that process and town council with- But we'd first want to get through that process, and Town Council would then be working with the board as far as finalizing that acquisition, including any and all approvals as far as taking the property per town meeting vote.
All right, great, thank you. Mark, do you have any other questions or comments from your board?
I'm ready, Anna, are you good?
Yeah, I'm good. I had one clarifying comment, though, at the beginning, when Joe Layden was talking about our work with the Planning Board goals, we actually created goals and approved them at our July 9th meeting. So if we, for, during our next meeting, what we planned to talk about was performance objectives, and so through that discussion, we may or may not amend some of our goals, but for right now, that's where we are. Just wanted to make sure that we got that out there.
Okay, great, thanks, Anna. All right, so, thank you for that, that background, that information. That was helpful. There's a Master Plan Implementation Committee meeting tomorrow night, so this will be helpful information to share with them at that time.
And I just wanted to say one more comment, Madam Chair.
Sure.
So INPEC is obviously, is a interesting role, because it does report to both Planning Board or is assigned by both Planning Board and Select Board.
Mm-hmm.
And then I think communication is on the agenda, and one of the things about the communication is just for any person who is a liaison to those boards, to make sure to go back to those boards and share the information from INPEC, get any new ideas or comments, and then bring them back. So I think as long as we maintain that role, we should be in good stead.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks, Anna. Okay, anything else on this agenda item?
Joe, if you were, if you were putting a dollar amount that we would need to get from somewhere, regardless of the budget.
I'd want to get about 20.
Okay.
And that's where, that's where the other eight, using another four would really do it. I mean, and with this consultant, I didn't have any role in, in sort of identifying the consultant, but I do know from actually doing, using the same consultant for village zoning in my previous town, 20, we got the product we needed to go to town meeting.
Okay. That's good information.
Great, good to know.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else, Mark?
No, we're done.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Okay, so the next agenda item was the Town Administrator update, the signing of the road layout plans. I believe that we're going to continue this, Mr. Layden, is that correct?
Yeah, I'd recommend just holding off on, on this to the next meeting mainly because, and I've been in touch with Maron Tuilos as well as Chris Heap. I have two sets that have Planning Board signature block only, two sets with Select Board. Ideally, one, we should be all the same, we shouldn't have two different sets. And my experience had been in street acceptance to have both sign it, so that the Planning Board is verifying that this is consistent with what they approved, and the Select Board then is signifying that action as far as accepting the layout at our layout hearing that held, that was held before annual town meeting. So because of the inconsistencies with the plans, I'd recommend that we just put this off to the next meeting.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments from the board? All right, that sounds perfect.
So then, also under Town Administrator, there was just general updates, and wanted to, at least because pulling together the packet, there was actually a contract that was just about the topic that we were talking about with Dodson Flinker and the station area plan, that is for $8,000. The, the scope of that is to actually start some of the design work, have public meetings. It would be something that I'd be recommending as we pull together some of the other budget items, we just amend it. But it fell under threshold as far as what, say, comes to the board for signing. Want to make sure that the board knows fully about what's going on, because it is to support the Littleton Station Area Committee work, but that it would be then later on, if we can pull together these funds, which I think are there, and we can do that, it would pull it into a larger project. Wasn't quite sure how, from looking at the Select Board policies, how that gets considered as far as needing to see, needing approval by the board. So in just, in talking to Madam Chair, that provided the board with an update because of the timeframe, really would want to start some of that work, but then, like I said, we can amend in some other tasks if we're able to then finalize those funds. So just at least wanted to give the board, or that for, for an update, not knowing if we want to have more of a discussion on it. We do have two people that are on that committee and, and we're, we're aware of some of that work, so.
Right. I, I mean, I just think it's important for the board to be aware of the work overall, especially the initial contract, just giving us a chance to look at it and making sure that we're in the loop and, and privy to the terms of the contract and, and the scope of the work that it pertains to, which in this case, you know, to your point, there's two members already on that committee. I don't know if there's any questions from other members of the board with respect to the contract that Mr. Layden just described, or?
No, I think as it plays out and we figure out the scope, I think you're, you're right, that it may be a bit of a moving target, and we can kind of-
Yeah.
Add stuff and kind of massage it.
Exactly, and that's for the, for, and I forget whether we're looking at the fifth or the sixth or the seventh of November for the next meeting. Okay.
One that was floated last-
Yeah, that's, that's right. So a bunch of dates being floated around last week. So that's where I expect to try to finalize and, and pull together sort of some draft additional scope language to then allow us to go back to not only the Select Board, but then also the Planning Board, just to sort of say, here's what an expanded scope would be bringing in the other funds.
Great, perfect, thank you. Okay, so now we are on to item eight. Mr. Layden, if you can lead us into it?
Yes. So these three items, I do have them as, as separate motions, just to keep Paul honest. But-
I tell you, just slid that in there.
But one of the main things is because of town meeting and our last, last meeting, some of these did require action a little earlier because of timelines, especially Green Communities and the MVP. Those were both, the state was pushing us on getting that, that language signed and off to them so they could start those projects. And then also, the end of this past week, had host community agreements certification form from the Harvest Club, which is a new form that the CCC is requiring, Campus Control Commission is requiring with applications, which basically, I think is just making sure they know who to get in touch with when they send those municipal certification forms. Because on two of them, we had contact information that went to an email address that while it's monitored, is not monitored to the second, and that, you know, led to delays of a couple of days as far as getting those things in. So I think this is basically just update contact information, and that's merely the purpose of it, but was looking for authorization for signing these retroactively.
I have no problem with it.
Okay, yeah, I don't either. Any of the-
Madam Chair, I'll read each of these rubber stamping motions, one by one, and you have a great chance to vote on them.
You want to just wave your hand over them, Paul?
Well, you're all phrased to retroactively authorize, it's, you know, yeah. And we really don't import, I guess, it's a question, though.
Second.
Struggling with you. All right, I'm hoping the Select Board vote to retroactively authorize the interim town administrator to complete and sign the municipal vulnerability program contract.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
I abstain.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, so motion eight A is passed, is written. Now we're on to eight B.
I'm hoping the Select Board vote to retroactively authorize the interim town administrator to complete and sign the Green Communities contract with Horizon Energy Services.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, motion eight B is approved as written, and now we're on, we're on to eight C.
I'm hoping the Select Board vote to retroactively authorize the interim town administrator to complete and sign the Campus Control Commission's host community agreements certification form for the Harvest Club.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
I abstain in order to avoid the conflict, appearance of a conflict of interest.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, the motion is approved for in favor, one abstention. Thank you, and we are on to-
Minutes.
Minutes. Wow. Minutes. Look at us go.
It's crazy when you eliminate a big chunk in the middle.
We have the October 13th and October 19th minutes, wonderfully written by, was it by Dianne or was it by Sue Ray? I'm not sure.
Sue.
Sue.
Okay, all right. And any questions from anyone, or any amendments?
They're all good, for, as far as I'm concerned.
Good to me.
Okay. I will move that the Board vote to approve the regular session meeting minutes of October 13th and October 19th, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, Mr. Glady?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye, the minutes are approved as written. Thank you again, Sue, for your hard work. Does excellent meeting minutes.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned, it's been made in second, and all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. That concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you, everyone. When are we meeting again?
The, I don't know.
Ninth.
November.
Sorry, wait.
The ninth.
And we will be back November 9th.
Forget to vote.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Happy Halloween.
Aye.